Ayontae Anderson, A-U-O-N apostrophe T-A-I, Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. Denver School Board Vice President. Today you will be hearing from a series of speakers representing different elected bodies and also our faith community. We also want to thank Assistant Majority Leader Jennifer Bacon for joining us, State Representative Regina English for joining us, Denver School Board Directors Michelle Quattlebaum and Scott Esserman for joining us, Tiffany Caudill representing Councilwoman Chantel Lewis's office, President of Harrison School District Two Cory Williams, and members of the Greater Ministerial, Greater Denver Ministerial Alliance, both Patrick Dimmer and Jerry Dimmer. So we thank you for joining us here today. Today we are here to update you on the ongoing investigation into the seclusion room otherwise identified by staff as an incarceration room at McCullough International School. First, I want to thank all of our, all of the speakers that will join us today. We will go from speaking myself and then we will turn it over to the Greater Denver Ministerial Alliance, then turn it over to Councilwoman Chantel Lewis's office, and then we'll turn it over to the School Board Directors to close it out, and Michelle Quattlebaum and then Scott Esserman. First, let me begin by acknowledging that we as a board and as a school district are not anti-McCallough International School. We are anti-incarceration rooms, we are anti-seclusion rooms, and we are pro-dismantling systems of oppression. I also would like to thank Denver Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Alex Marrero who is in the back and his, and his administrative staffing cabinet that has joined us here today. Last week several questions were unanswered as we had just launched an investigation. Today, I hope to be able to give you more clarity on what we have learned, and we have remained in contact with the McCullough whistleblowers. We have learned that this individual that has reached out does not only represent themselves, but a collective of employees at McCullough. In total, we can now confirm there are seven whistleblowers that we know of. I want to thank each of them for being brave to share what they have witnessed, what they have witnessed as employees of McCullough. Additionally, the former principal has released a statement and has admitted to placing the lock on the outside of the door while placing students in this room alone. Additionally, he stated that the district never gave guidance on how to place a lock on the outside of the door. This is a violation of administrative policy JKA dash R. Employees shall not use seclusion with students, and this, and, and this is because DPS would never give such guidance on how to place a lock on the exterior door. Throughout this process, it has been difficult to watch individuals rush to the defense of those who have admitted to locking our children into an incarceration room, and to see an attorney, once a civil rights champion, stand in the defense of white supremacy at the expense of students of color and students with disabilities. On August 3rd, we received more, we received more emails from the whistleblowers stating the following. That should also, it should also be noted that most of the students locked in this room had IEPs and were quite literally dragged through the school, screaming down the hallway, and put into this room on many occasions. At 3:11 PM, another email was sent by the whistleblowers. Multiple administrators would stand outside the door and hold it shut as a student would scream and destroy the room and try to get out. They would do this until the students tired themselves out and possibly fall asleep from crying. This could last 30 minutes to an hour, or as long as it took. After these two emails were sent, the Office of the General Counsel recommended these allegations have now risen to the issue of a mandatory report by the, to the Denver Police Department. I have never shared this following story publicly, but when I was 12 years old, back home in Kansas, I went through a similar situation. I was incarcerated for two days at our, in our juvenile justice system. At the time, juvenile intakes had to be placed in solitary confinement for 24 hours before they could reach general population. For 24 hours, I cried, screamed to be let out, banging on a cell door, hoping it would open, and that night I cried myself to sleep in a cold cell. I know exactly what those children went through, and it makes me sick to think that any child had no choice but to cry themselves to sleep while trusted adults watched them through a small window like an animal. After these two emails were sent, the Office of the General Counsel again recommended that these had risen to the level of referring them to Denver Police. At 5:29 PM, the whistleblower provided multiple names of students whom they suspected were locked into the incarceration room on various occasions. I can confirm through our initial investigation that Denver Public Schools has confirmed at least one of these students, names provided who was frequently locked in this room. It is important to note that most of the statements made by the whistleblowers have been corroborated at this time by the ongoing investigation in Denver Public Schools. When asked if the whistleblower would speak to investigators or the Office of the General Counsel, they declined and stated that the issue at hand extends beyond just the former principal. It implicates the entire administrative body. The responsibility for these events, that the responsibility for these events transpired is a collective, with some individuals actively participating in the detainment and restraint of students in the room, including the new interim principal. The administration's actions further compound the problem. They would send students home without officially making it a suspension, thereby contravening their individualized learning programs, or IEPs. This has now potentially implicated the interim leader of the school and other school admin as potential co-conspirators, and this must be investigated. Director Esserman will go into detail on the findings that Denver Public Schools has made since the start of the, the investigation. Today, I am pleased to announce that Representative Regina English has committed to being the sponsor of a bill to ban seclusion rooms across K-12 schools throughout the state of Colorado. We are grateful for her leadership on this issue. In conclusion, my promise to our DPS community is, is this. Every remaining day left in my tenure will be dedicated to rooting out injustice and ensuring a safe and respectful environment for our students. This is not the time for inaction or silence. It is a time for resolve and accountability. To those that think they can exploit the innocent and trust of our students, know that we will find you, and you will face the full force of justice. And now we will hear from the Greater, Greater Denver Ministerial Alliance.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. My name is Bishop Jerry Dimmer, and I am the public relation for the Greater Metro Denver Ministerial Alliance. I stand in the state of our president, the Dr. Thomas Mays, the president of the Greater Metro Denver Ministerial Alliance, and he has sent his message. The Greater Metro Denver Ministerial Alliance realized there is an ongoing investigation by Denver Public Schools regarding the de-escalation room, or seclusion room, at McCullough International School. According to a whistleblower, we understand that students of color were being locked inside of rooms multiple times last year. We are concerned, very, very concerned about what appears not only to be abuse of our children, but also a dress rehearsal for prison life. Solidarity confinement is a form of imprisonment, ah, in which an incarcerated person lives in a single cell with little or no contact with other people. It is a horrible tool, ah, of the prison system when you incarcerate individuals who are considered to be security risks to other incarcerated individuals or prison staff, as well as those who violate. Facility rules are deemed disruptive. A robust body of research has shown that solidarity, solidarity confinement has profound negativity when it comes to psychological, or physical, or even neurology, neurology, I can't talk today, neurology, let's do it that way, effects of those who experience it, often lasting well beyond one's time in solidarity. We of the Greater Metro Denver Ministerial Alliance stands against any kind of confinement for students anywhere.
Thank you. And now we will hear from Councilwoman Chantel Lewis's office.
My name is Tiffany Caudill, and I am here from the office of Councilwoman Chantel Lewis to read her statement. I want to assure our community that we are taking these allegations extremely serious. There is an investigation happening within DPS, and now the Denver Police Department is conducting their own investigation as the allegations have risen to the level of a potential crime being committed against our children. No one should be above the law, especially those entrusted with the education and well-being of our children. Furthermore, we must use this incident as a catalyst for change. It is imperative that we reevaluate our policies, procedures, and oversight mechanisms within our educational system to ensure that incidents like these do not occur again. We must foster a culture of inclusivity, respect, and accountability throughout our schools, with particular attention to the needs and experiences of our marginalized students. We need to create and foster a relationship with our schools and other governing bodies in Denver to better support our teachers, support staff, and most urgently, our students. In the most trying of times, we must stand together as a community to condemn such actions and demand justice for the students and families affected. Our commitment to equity and justice must be unwavering. Together, we will work tirelessly to ensure the safety, well-being, and success of all of our students, regardless of their race, background, or zip code. Thank you.
And now we will hear from School Board Members Michelle Quattlebaum, followed by Director Esserman, and then we will open it up for a few moments for questions from the press.
Michelle Quattlebaum, Secretary of Denver Public School Board. I stand before you today as a mother, as a school board member, and as a deeply pained member of the Denver community. I stand here not just as an advocate for public education, but as a mother who has spent decades advocating for underrepresented students and families. The discovery of this incarceration room at McCullough International School where black children were incarcerated is more than an affront to our community, our values, and our children. It echoes a dark past that we as a nation and a community pledge never, never to revisit. We must face this horrific reality that some of the destructive mechanisms of a system we fought to dismantle still finds its way into our schools. As a mother of two vibrant, black young men, and one beautifully amazing, black young woman, who all attended Smiley Middle School, referenced today here as McCullough. The weight of this discovery is staggering. Our schools are supposed to be a solution to ignorance, prejudice, not a breeding ground for cruel and unjustified practices. We must address this alarming situation with the seriousness and the urgency it deserves, which is what Denver Public Schools has done. As a school board, our end statement is to dismantle deeply rooted systems of oppression. We may have stumbled, but it's not the fall that defines us, but how we rise. And let us remember that the stumble is one of the Denver community. That includes each of us. As those in the media know, I will always ask you all a question. How will you choose to rise? How will you choose to step forward? Therefore, we must hold, hold those responsible, accountable, ensure transparency, enforce, reinforce accountability, and encourage our state legislators to rewrite laws to eliminate any resemblance of an opportunity for racism from all of our institutions. This is our fight, Denver community. It's a fight for our children, for our future, and the betterment of a nation as our students go out into the world. But for every child who has ever been silenced, marginalized, violated, or invalidated, please know, you do have champions. And as I look around the room, I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to say that everyone present in this room is signing up to be a champion, to ensure that the children are believed enough, at the very least, to launch an investigation, and not revictimized. We must believe the children. Thank you.
And now we will hear from Denver School Board Treasurer Scott Esserman, and then we will open it up for brief remarks, or brief questions from the press.
Scott Esserman, S-C-O-T-T-E-S-S-E-R-M-A-N. Going to first share some of the information that, that has been updated since we last saw you last week, and then, and then provide a couple of my own comments. So one, when new terms show up in the public eye, there's often confusion. There's been a lot of discussion about de-escalation and seclusion. Sometimes those are combined, sometimes those are conflated. It's important to note that there's a difference between de-escalation and seclusion. De-escalation occurs when a student is experiencing escalating emotions, and staff uses techniques to help the student regulate their emotions. At times, the students may be brought to a quiet room to calm down. When placed in a de-escalation room, the student voluntarily goes into the room and is accompanied by an adult at all times with the door left open. We have learned that what is said to have allegedly occurred at McCullough International School was not de-escalation, but seclusion. We learned that from the whistleblower, and I'm thankful to Dr. Marrero and his staff for quickly and rapidly launching a very thorough investigation into that. Seclusion is when a student that is experiencing escalating emotions is locked into a room by themselves until they calm down, as you heard Director Anderson discuss. De-escalation is allowed in DPS in certain circumstances, seclusion is not, even if a parent agrees to it. De-escalation rooms exist throughout DPS. However, they are not intended to be used as seclusion spaces. In 2019, four years ago, DPS issued a memo that provided clear guidance for the creation of de-escalation rooms. What has been called a de-escalation room at McCullough International School was clearly not in compliance with DPS's stated guidelines. As of now, we are aware of at least three students who have been identified by the investigation and corroborated by the whistleblower, who were placed in the de-escalation room at McCullough International School during the 2022-23 school year. At least one of the students who was placed in this room did not have an individual education plan, often referred to as an IEP, or 504 plan, that supported the use of a de-escalation room as an intervention. Under no circumstances, I'm going to repeat this, is seclusion a permissible intervention in DPS to support a student with needs of that type. Decisions made about the interventions to support a student experiencing emotional escalation are made on an individual basis based on the student's particular needs in conjunction with a parent's guardian, and that as part of the team at the school. They generally adhere to the student's individual education plan, section, or section 504 plan. Again, DPS, under no circumstances, is seclusion a permissible intervention. I want to provide a little bit of my own personal framework to the community rhetoric that has taken place in the last week. If we're not framing this discussion about what happened to the children at McCullough as being wrong, we have a problem. That's humanity, that's dignity. What occurred with these students was not right and cannot be justified. More importantly, it speaks to what has become a dialogue, a conversation, if you will, at times, around inclusion versus exclusion. We as a board have had numerous conversations, dialogue, meeting, work on our policies about the importance of inclusion in Denver Public Schools, about the extreme need to limit as much as possible any exclusionary discipline. What occurred here was exclusionary. Either we believe that all students have the right to learn, or we start to phrase things around those kids. And we start to believe that somehow my child's safety is more important than another child's safety and inclusion. We're missing something if we don't listen to the voices of our most vulnerable and marginalized students and families that would help the district move forward in a positive direction. I have one last piece that I need to address that came from the whistleblower that's troubling. On July 7th, the whistleblower reached out to Nine News, sharing their concerns and experiences, sharing the same information that they ultimately shared with Director Anderson, and with more information than was initially provided to us, along with the same video that the room was being used to incarcerate students. We have now confirmed that Nine News did not report on this information, did not follow up with the anonymous whistleblower, other than to ask for them to reveal their identity, nor did they refer this information to the district so that the district could investigate. That's why a month later, those individuals referred the matter over to Vice President Anderson at Denver Public Schools, and on August 2nd, our investigation began, and subsequently on August 3rd, a criminal investigation with Denver Police was opened. This is deeply concerning, given Nine News's role thus far in occurrences at McCullough International School. I have questions. I've seen a lot of our media report on a potential $9 million shortfall in our $1.2 billion budget, and not a single story on our balanced $1.2 billion budget this year. Not a single story. Or the board passed, initiated and passed policy mandating universal dyslexia screening that actually starts to break down systems of oppression and serves our marginalized students as well. Where was reporting on graduations like 5280 High School, which serves students recovering from addiction? Or Emily Griffith High School, which recognized and honored the family of the student killed in front of this building? Or any of our comprehensive high schools that graduated their highest number of students in history, higher than any other district in Colorado? But it seems like we're caught in a trap of wanting to sensationalize. We want to talk about how the board talks to each other instead of what this district is doing well. We want to focus on the negative. I'd ask you to please do better.
With that, we'll open it up for brief questions from the media.
Could you talk a little bit about what exactly the DPS investigation entails? What are you specifically looking for? Are you looking at other schools?
I would say that our, our trusted team of investigators from the district are looking into the matter to ensure that we are getting justice for those who have been impacted by this school at McCullough, and also making sure that this practice does not exist anywhere else in the Denver Public Schools. This is not, unfortunately, we would have been able to catch this if the former principal would have sent an actual work order to Denver Public Schools. Instead, he instructed a subordinate of his to place the locks on the doors and windows himself. And so with that, we are looking at and investigating this matter to the fullest extent, and I believe that there will be a time where Denver Public Schools will invite you, our partners in the media, to come join and actually look what happened at McCullough, and actually what is a de-escalation room in DPS, and you'll see the stark differences. Locks on the windows, locks on the outside of the doors, a broken vent, wires hanging out of a wall, exposed pipe, and drywall being exposed for a student to punch through those walls. That's not a de-escalation room. And we're going to make sure that this practice is not being implemented anywhere else in the Denver Public Schools. Scott?
I just want to add something quickly to that. I want to make the clear distinction that the investigation being undertaken is being undertaken by Dr. Marrero and his staff. This is not a board investigation. We are sharing publicly with you, as your elected officials, what's going on so that you're updated. We are doing nothing, and we are in communication with his staff to ensure that we do nothing to jeopardize the investigation, but this is a Dr. Marrero and his staff investigation and not a board investigation.
Yeah. Jessica?
You mentioned that other administrators were involved, but this really, what action would they be taking in regards to this?
Well, if it is true that any other employees violated administrative policy JKRA, that would be a question for the superintendent and his office about what they plan to do around employment matters. The Denver School Board doesn't get involved in employment matters, we have one employee. But we expect our one employee to hold his employees accountable. So that would be a comment for the superintendent to give you after this. Steve?
So far with, well, President Anderson, you may be aware of a letter circulating right now from a parent who says that the school board, the school district has not reached out to her, that her son has utilized this room. Is the district, or are you individually reaching out to the three students you've identified who've been in this room, and talking to them about their experience?
The Denver, the Denver School Board is... The Denver School Board currently is, is not in, in reach or in contact with any of the students involved. That is up to the investigators. I'd love to get clarification on what the parent is asking, I mean, what you're saying around utilized. And also, I can tell you that the, I've read the letter, it was shared on Facebook, it has yet to be shared officially with the Denver School Board through any of our official email channels, and I have not heard that the superintendent's office has received that letter. I've read it on Facebook, and the parent identifies that they have a student that is of white skin. All students at this time that we have found are all students of color. So this means that the victim count has now went up, and this is troubling, and regardless if a parent agreed to it or not, it's still against board policy.
If the whistleblowers claims, if the whistleblowers claims are being referred to as alleged, I would ask also that the facts in this anonymous letter that hasn't been shared with any of us officially is also referred to as alleged.
Haseen?
So far with the investigation rumor, there have been two at-large DPS school board candidates, or at least been involved in some type of implicated in this investigation or other type of behavior as it relates to racism against students and staff. What can you say about that?
This is some of the first time that I'm hearing about that, but it's troubling, and I hope voters will vet the candidates that are seeking to serve on this board. If you're running for this board to reinstate a, a school leader that you like, this is not the purpose of you serving on the school board. And I hope that, I look forward to all candidates that are running both for reelection and for the general election for an open seat, for them to condemn this. I'm looking forward to all of their statements by the end of the week. Brother Jeff?
There is a stark difference between this press conference and the former press conference. The former press conference, you stood with the president and announced that there was a unified approach towards this issue, including the board and the superintendent, and the superintendent was under the weather and was not able to attend. The superintendent is in the room right now, not standing with you. When will we hear from the superintendent? And then I've also heard that one of your colleagues, at least one of your colleagues is expressing that this is not a board issue. This is, going back to that word, I would imagine, operational. Will we be hearing from the superintendent? Will he be standing with you today? And he's in the room, so why isn't he here? Because... And he's in the room, so why isn't he here? Because I got questions for him also.
Yeah, the superintendent will take any questions after this press conference for any of our partners in the media that would like to approach him. This is an opportunity for us as a board, as the superintendent was not the one to receive the whistleblower emails. This is an opportunity for us as board members that did. And the board member that did, I asked for community to come and stand in solidarity. We have people that drove across the state to be here because this is wrong.
Will you ask the superintendent to stand in solidarity with you right now? Will you ask the superintendent to stand in solidarity with you all right now in the way that you all announced it on the last press conference that he was in solidarity and sick, he's in the room? Will you, as you invited others, invite the superintendent to stand with you right now and address, in this press conference, questions from the media? Not individually, but where we can all hear and those who are live watching as well in the spirit of transparency. Will you right now invite the superintendent to join you all and stand in unity? If in fact unity is what you all have?
Ladies and gentlemen, I give you the superintendent of Denver Public Schools.
Thank you, and good morning. Good morning, all. Of course, I stand in solidarity, and of course, I'm wearing a mask. I was under the weather last week. I am negative for COVID, but just precautionary and to make everyone feel comfortable. Here's what I can share related to the investigation. The only reason why I'm not here standing before you all. And of course, I am in solidarity. I was the one who ultimately made decisions to terminate Mr. Dennis, and this has been a pattern consistent with what we've seen. But here's what I can share. I have been informed by our Executive Director of Labor and Employee Relations and Manager of Employee Relations and Investigations that they recommend in this ongoing investigation that I do three things this week. One, related to administrative policy and training, I have to provide training for all McAuliffe staff on administrative policy, JKA, related to restraints, physical holds, seclusion; administrative policy, JKA-R, related to restrict physical holds and seclusion before the start of their school year, which is next week, Monday. Second, is to review all school protocols, examine and revise school protocols regarding staff and student access to any de-escalation room, emotional control room, timeout room, and or quiet room. And I have to ensure that these protocols are clear and consistent and aligned with the district policies. And third, monitoring, establish a system for ongoing monitoring and reporting of any incidences related to monitored seclusion. So while former Principal Dennis confirmed that this, I guess, the use of this room, Employee Relations has come to know, based on preliminary information, that at least on one occasion, said room was used and an employee office was room, involuntarily preventing by holding the door from outside. As such, it recommends a full review of policy and procedure with staff. So for the McAuliffe community, we will be communicating not only this, a new development in terms of how we can anticipate the start of the school year at McAuliffe, and of course, the start of the school year for the 200-plus other schools that we have. Thank you.
One question, Dr. Marrero. It was just indicated at this press conference that the whistleblower initially gave information to Nine News. Are you saying that you as a superintendent or none of your staff had any information whatsoever about the information or this situation as presented to Director Anderson?
That is correct and is incredibly unfortunate. We are investigating further. Based on the email thread, it is clear that that was shared weeks prior. And now that we have it, we're investigating. So it is an unfortunate reality as of now. We will confirm shortly if it was communicated, received, I should say, by that outlet.
Jessica and Steve?
How did you not know about it when there was a work order to the district saying that there needed to be worked out on this room because of the damage from the kids?
Great question, and I hear this is where I get to inform on all the layers that we have to certain schools. So work orders, we have them regularly. And there's no, if we don't have any prior knowledge that we have to investigate further, there's no reason to. So a work order comes and goes, and the process is followed. And we have multi-layers that just respond accordingly. But also, the key component is the visibility to certain schools, and McAuliffe being one. So there's an added layer, and a lot of this we will have to go through, even if there is further personnel changes. We have to go through the NDES innovation zone to get to the employees. So I want to make that clear.
Question for Dr. Marrero. You know, this letter that's being circulated indicates that there's a parent who hasn't heard from the district, whose child was in this room. Are you making any effort to reach out to the parents of the children whom you like?
Yeah, so we've become aware of it unofficially. Like Director Anderson mentioned, we haven't received the official communication. We've only seen the social media. We asked that person to please come forward so we can add them to the investigation. And that's as much as I can say. However, what I can say is, regardless of how that was described, there's nothing in that letter that says that that was okay.
Last question from Erica for Dr. Marrero.
Okay, the second two things that you said, reviewing school protocols and monitoring, was that for all schools in the district, not just McAuliffe?
So based on the HR investigation, it's asking me to do it for McAuliffe this week. However, it's become known that we have to possibly do it for the entire district.
Okay, because my other question is, how confident are you that this is isolated to McAuliffe? Because every time that we write about a situation like this, we hear from teachers and say, "Oh, you don't know what it's like. You don't know what we have to do," which would indicate that whatever bad thing we just wrote about is happening in other schools.
We encourage anybody that has any knowledge of any of this practice being throughout Denver Public Schools, for you to reach out to Denver Public Schools and let us investigate and let us make sure that we're ending those rooms. That would be the last question for Dr. Marrero. Any other questions for board members?
Yes, actually, Dr. Marrero, if you could please step to the podium. Is there anything else that you could tell us about the circumstances under which these students ended up in this room? Director Ayante has talked about one of them. What else can you tell parents and what else might they should be, should they be concerned about that led to the detaining of these students in these rooms?
In terms of the investigation, I cannot share any details.
Thank you.
There is nothing, nothing that a school leader, that a student can do in a school to lead to them putting, being put in a room that mimics incarceration. Our schools here in Denver Public, the Denver Public Schools, there is not one school that we have. Well, okay, I have to take that back because we do staff Gillio, which is a correctional facility. But with the exception of that, we don't have correction facilities. McAuliffe is not a correction facility. There are other methods that could have been implemented. But to incarcerate a student? I ask you, I turn that back on you. What, what can a student do to warrant that? Help me find the through line to that one.
Do you all know if there was any video surveillance in this room that would have shown this taking place?
So when Director Esserman and I walked through the school this past week, we can let you, we can confirm that there was no cameras in any of the hallways of the L-shaped hallway which this room resides in. There is a door that is supposed to be for, I would say, fire drills that is 50 feet away from this incarceration room, does not have an exterior like a silent alarm, is not, is an emergency exit. That also does not have a camera at that exitway. So it is speculative, but it's also problematic that this room would be so buried into the back of the school where if these students truly were a threat to themselves and others, you would think that the work order should have said, instead of a lock on the door, "Can I have a camera so we can monitor the students in the event that they run out?" Because it was said that the students would run out, therefore that's why they wanted a lock placed on the door. DPS is going to be reaching out within this week to invite folks into the, to view the room.
Is it probable to believe that they used this room because of the lack of cameras?
I think it's speculative, but I think that it definitely raises concern.
Also, is there a support group set up for, understanding the long reach of the mob mentality of white supremacy that's come out behind this, even after the admission from their principal that he did this? Is there a safety number set up or a support group set up for more parents and community members to come, and staff, former staff or current, to come forward?
The Integra hotline is what we use for our community members and staff that would like to share stuff anonymously. It's 100% anonymously. And so I encourage people to use that and still encourage people to reach out. We're gonna have Dr. Marrero share one last remark in Espanol, and then I will close this out. We do have to get back to the rest of our days.
And Dr. Marrero, as you prepared for your remarks, sir, were there any Latino children?
Para los amigos de nosotros de la prensa hispana, los detalles no puedo explicar, pero después de la conferencia puedo dar unos cuantos detalles. Pero la investigación sigue y ojalá podemos concluir antes del comienzo de la escuela. Si no, vamos a tener entrenamiento esta semana para esta escuela. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Dr. Marrero. Thank you. So I will close this out. And Dr. Marrero is available for, I'm gonna close this out. Dr. Marrero will be available if you would like to talk to him afterwards. So let me just be very clear. Regardless of you support putting your student in this room, it's against board policy and it's unethical. If any students were put in this room against their will, we will find you and we will hold you accountable. This will not happen in Denver Public Schools or anywhere else in our state. And we will ask that the community show up to support State Representative Dr. Regina English as we seek to ban seclusion rooms across the state of Colorado. With that, this will be, for now, the Board of Education won't have any other comments on this matter until we hear more information from our whistleblower. For our future statements on this matter, we'll refer you to the Denver Public Schools Bill Good, our Chief of Communications. Thank you.